Pretty impressive. Said there's serious people.
I hope he's happy. I know he was unhappy.
No, just trying to figure out what might. There's so much. It's not infrastructure, but there's so much that either wasn't done. Is happening that. Has potential to be the culprit.
Only thing better if you come work.
All along with somebody is doing this because I've been in that house for twenty years. And. The fact that. It's just not. And the roads are so bad now.
It's forty of the one that goes to the water. It's the one below that.
Yeah. State of the right.
Uh, this is the interest.
Then I'm gonna go in and request payment to be added to what's not my.
I made it up there.
How are you? I try not to go that often.
How you doing Bruno?
Yeah. Depends what we want to talk about, but I'm doing all right. I like to suppress things. It's healthy.
Did you matter on your wife and you don't have a dog, do you?
I do.
You don't kick it, do you?
No, I try. I try not to do those things.
Just goes in the bathroom.
I do call her dumb from time to time. Because she's not the brightest. Yes, yes. No, my wife's amazing. That would be.
I noticed.
My marriage.
I noticed they're putting a lot of work made in my building.
Because of all the work that's happening.
Amazing what happens when you get your kids around a little bit. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's never a bad thing to.
All right, I'd call this main order. It's about two oh two in the afternoon. And I'll call me the order.
Member Alman. Member Silva.
Here.
Member Shoals.
Here.
Member Sabatier.
Here.
And Chair Colburn.
Here.
Just as a reminder, our sound is coming into the speakers above the screen. So when you speak, we have people on Zoom. Loudly so they can hear you.
Okay, may I ask you a question? How many people do we have on Zoom?
We have one.
And it's not me.
No, it is not.
Hey Ray, would you like to do some pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Some more last name questions to approve the agenda?
Close.
All favors.
Hi.
Close.
Um, I'm opposed because I wanted to have my issue considered.
Oh, I mean, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. But it would be nice. I would do them.
Okay, let's just do another one. Because nervous about.
I'm stressed. Yes, I am stressed.
Okay, okay, we'll do that. Okay, type of public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the measure V oversight board. Of any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject and jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions is not allowed to mention the oversight board or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public funding. The board cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff replaced on the next available agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Our comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comment?
I have a question. I. I can't, um, I don't need my password. I just got this notice today about the meeting of two. And so I haven't had a chance to review any of this stuff. I'm mainly concerned about where I live in the village and that our roads have not been paved. They've been patched, but they've not been paved since this meeting passed. I think it does something years ago. So that's why I need to be simply here to find out if they're going to be actually paid in the near future. I don't know if that's on the agenda again.
Any other public comment? There we go.
So I have an issue with the roads on left forty of the street. Between Mullen and Fifty Three. I've given a letter regarding what I consider. The deterioration of the road is now causing problems both from potholes as well as the structure. I was. Yeah, it's just a problem that is coming forward and I'm concerned we hold up the road. There's four or five of us with large retaining walls and we're having problems with those. With the roads because of the potholes. I mean, there's lots of potholes. And it's allocated as well. Thank you. I'm giving you all the left.
Right, we'll give this to the city. I think this is something that could. We did potential litigation some from the future. So I think this, talking to the city engineers. And attorneys to see if you can get your problem resolved would probably be the best thing to do. As this committee doesn't really decide what roads get fixed when. We oversee the money to see that the money is being used as, as provided for in the ordinance. And that's why this financial is here. So we can take a look at that. That the nut, the roast and the rotation of what gets fixed is for the city council to decide. With the recommendations from the city engineers and planners and, and how they go about. You know, their priorities.
He's out of the office today.
I don't think there's.
He was at the last one.
Okay, any other public comment on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom.
Anyone else in the room? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to business. Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes from our October twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting? Yeah. And Bruno looks like he doesn't remember.
I'm just trying to figure out why abstain from the agenda last time.
You were not present in the room.
You were a little bit late, I think. So maybe the. Accent from the vote rather than abstain. Abstain sounds like a stated thing that I did.
Yeah, I could change the wording. I can do that.
I apologize that I was a little late that day for that meeting.
Any other additions or changes to the minutes?
I'm to approve the meeting minutes with an amendment to absent from abstain for the approval of the agenda.
Do you have a second? Second, all favor.
Hi.
Any pose? During the meeting, minutes have been approved. Okay, now it's time to review. The prior year expenditures and review the updated measure B plan resolution OC two zero two four dash one. And. Would you like to read it a little bit through the public?
We're going to leave this off. We have Matt Cressy on the Zoom who will go over the expenditures that I previewed here. Here on that.
Great, thank you. So before this, prior year expenditures for the year ending. Is there feedback?
Wait, we're gonna turn you up.
Okay.
Okay, try that.
Try. Okay.
All right. So annually, measure B committee use the prior year expenditures and takes a look to see that they're being spent for their regular purpose. And the resolution just documents that the formal approval or review. Um, the report I is before you and that shows the revenues. And the revenues are coming right on target with what was expected, two point six three seven million. We received two point six oh two, so about thirty-four thousand. Under what we estimated. So that's basically one point three one percent on target. Uh, and. Uh, the next section under it is all the expenditures. We have both salaries of staff that work on projects. And all of their related, um, uh, you know, salary and benefit costs. And then we have the, the bigger costs are related to capital projects and. An outlay. Uh, and then of course, the debt service, which was a loan. The annual principal amount paid back. Uh, this was the, I think, the second year of principal and interest. And so it was one, one million five fifty-seven thousand of principal and four hundred and thirty thousand of interest. And those proceeds from that. When it was originally borrowed, uh, are accounted for in the next fund, which is the next section, Fund Two Twenty-One. And that shows the expenditures and, um, the related improvements in the city road improvements. That occurred during the year and that totals one point two million. Um, so as far as total expenditures, uh, we have. Um, aside from the loaned amount, that was moving back up in the middle of the first page. Two point five million and, uh, and so forth. So. Um, I do have the details of those expenditures, but and, and I think staff there probably could speak to. Uh, the Public Works Director could probably speak more to exactly, you know, what segments of roads were improved and, and so forth. But. Uh, the financial report is pretty straightforward. There is four pages. Then, uh, page three. Is just a summary of revenue and expenses for each of the two funds. That account for measure V and then the fourth page is just the different, the net essentially revenue minus expenses, just another. Uh, way to look at the same information. I think most everything is on the first page. Uh, that has all the expenditures and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Hi, uh. The measure V loan fund, I do have a question about the, uh. The interest adjustment. There's two numbers there. Are they both interest paid on the money that was sitting in the life account? At five twenty and three forty-two? Or is. They're both. Money that we took in because of taking the loan.
Um, so the middle to, to the bottom of the first page has interest. Of five hundred and twenty thousand. That is in, in, uh, invested in the pooled investments and life is the biggest investment. And so it did. Earned five hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, when the loan was made, those proceeds are then in an interest-bearing account and. And earning interest. So that's why that's so high until those are drawn down and projects get off the ground and, and funds are spent. Uh, so that and on the top part, it's only eighteen thousand interest income. And that's just because. As the money comes in, it's pretty much spent and there's not as much of a balance. Um, we do allocate interest quarterly. So this reflects. Uh, all four quarters of the year interest earned.
So the three forty-two is also, uh, an interest earned.
Yeah, that one is a life fair market value adjustment. Uh, basically life is the state's. Investment pool, uh, as you probably know, and they, their market value. Uh, will adjust based on market trends, either up or down. So they quarterly will make a market adjustment. Uh, either up or down, uh, from the original cost of those investments. In a, you know, upward trending market where it's getting better. There, uh, they will have a gain and in a downward trending of a loss. And this actually books it. So it's a. Positive amount, which means it's a gain, uh, which is good for the fund. And so that's a kind of a windfall, uh, based on market conditions of existing investments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Cressy? Anyone in the public make, would like to make any comments or questions?
Sorry, um. So I appreciate the, uh, numbers, but I, I, I thought that. At least from what I believe would be a layman perspective, it's a little confusing. Where there's a whole column that I feel is just absolutely unnecessary, the period activity. Uh, which I'm assuming is June only. Uh, but we're looking at a fiscal because it says twenty-three, twenty-four, period ending six thirty, which makes sense if you're looking at fiscal. But then that column just becomes really confusing as to how it fits in there. I. Understood it and just deleted it in my mind, but I think that we can make the reporting easier for public consumption. By not having extra numbers that really just confuse things where it's hard to figure out. What it means and what, what is, uh, uh, how it affects the overall numbers. Um.
Yep.
Overall, everything looked good. Um. Even though we made a little bit less than what we anticipated, we're still making a whole lot more than what we originally, uh, believed we would be making when we, uh, passed measure V. Uh, there, there were a couple of things, just things that kind of piqued my interest a little bit and, and it's me being nitpicky. Because I feel I have to come up with something rather than nothing. Uh, but this was specifically voted on for roads and I get it that we're using it for, uh. Uh, compensation of salaries for those that are working on the roads. Uh, but when I see things like uniforms or cell phones, it kind of pops out at me as. Is that, is that really, especially for the amount, it would be, uh, it would be nice if it was more direct. Connection to the road rather than a connection to being an employee of the city where the city was going to do that in the first place. Uh, so that, that's my only little bit that I can come up with that I feel might be, uh. From the public's perspective, something that doesn't fit. And just so I thought I'd express that.
It's a good, good point. And we can maybe lower the amount of line items and just have more general categories. They're all valid, you know, expenditures like you indicated, but. Uh, it does, um, cause unnecessarily unnecessary, uh. Maybe discomfort for certain people as far as seeing, you know, certain benefits, uh, or what have you. Um. So good, good point.
Well, I actually like the transparency of digging down into the weeds so that we're not. Looking like we're not showing everything. I like the digging down and I like. The transparency of saying like, yeah, these guys have cell phones. We contact them when they're working on their cell phones. That's something that we have to pay for because, you know, they're working on our job, our time, and we pay towards their cell phone. So. I think it's legitimate to post that and if people will ask any questions about it, if they think not, if they think. You know, uniforms are, are not a good thing or whatever, then let's have the discussion, but. In a lump sum figure isn't, I think, what Bruno wanted to do.
I'm not looking at anything. And again, it only adds up to less than like two thousand dollars, but I just know it's. The way that it was passed was for direct cost of roads. This is to me an indirect and just thought I'd express it.
Yeah, and I, I would like to ask that too, because when we talked about measure V, measure V is specific to this project and the regular, um. Staff for roads and their maintenance should be identified. We have just not seen.
I, I think we had that discussion. Quite a few times I brought it up is that the public works crew. Took up a big chunk. A third of the budget and these type of expenses. Um, what I was told, and I guess it might be true, I don't know, maybe. Somebody could address it is that if it weren't for the measure V funds. We wouldn't have a public works crew to speak of because there'd be no money for them. So when you want to maintain and upkeep the roads, I think it's. Pretty reasonable assume to assume that, uh. The, uh, the cost of maintaining a crew and putting uniforms and all that would be applied. It's not my first choice. I want, I want to buy asphalt paved roads, but in the meantime, you're gonna maintain drainage and you're gonna. Have a crew to do it. Um, that's gonna help keep the roads that we have in decent shape. Uh, I can't see an argument about, about not spending money for the crews unless we have another source of income. That's all we got. So.
But we had that source of income before we all started.
Not, not with the number of employees that are in public works current.
That's right. So there's a. There's a big difference in the staffing available for public works because of measure V.
Okay, and I guess I'm just making sure we're not quitting our whole staff.
My, my understanding is that the, the funding for, that we get from, uh, gas taxes. What else is used for the public works or has been historically used. Um, has actually shrunk. Uh, the state's actually withdrawn a lot of that support, changing the amount of gas taxes. Um, so I, I, I. I argued about not having to pay for this crew and just buy an asphalt, but I think it's unreasonable under the circumstances. That we have to do it and, and, uh. I don't see an alternative.
And you're correct. And when we started, it was about a third because we were only making about one point five, one point six million on a one percent, if I remember correctly. Uh, but now it's like one fifth because we've grown. So I don't see. The salaries growing in the sense, I mean, obviously it's probably going up two percent, three percent, whatever the annual increase is. But I don't feel like they are. Growing in the salary expenses at that same ratio as we're growing in the amount of sales tax that we're receiving. Which I think is healthy to see that more of a rate, a percentage of the revenues of measure V are going directly to the roads.
Especially since the, uh, the proceeds are going up. I agree.
We have a parks crew and we have a roads crew, crew, and specifically the roads crew that does the work on the roads. Is paid from gas tax and measure V because those are strict funds for those types of activities. So. If the parks crew isn't paid for a measure V, obviously. And like Bruno said, you know, the, the. The more work that we do, you know, it's, it's an allowable use in, in the ordinance, but the more work that we do. Uh, the more people that we need. So.
What, what is this total public works budget allocated to all of us? I'm not talking about the construction. I'm just talking about. The payroll and to run the public works through that includes the parks and everything else that they do. Drainage, cutting weeds, the whole nine yards. I'm, I'm guessing it must be in the million dollar range.
I can have that for you in just a minute.
Okay, thank you. I'm not talking about construction. I'm just talking about the, the. Uh, ongoing costs, the crew that we support. Including equipment and uniforms and cell phones and the whole nine yards.
What, what I, while you're looking at information, what I will say, uh, from what we've seen and what we were told before. Is you still have your public works crew doing a lot of prep work. Uh, for the construction that's going to happen, like trimming trees, cleaning up culverts, whatever it is. I, I've seen them digging out Olympic, trying to find where the old curb used to be. They, they found it. Um, but I, I, I see your crew doing the, uh. The, all, all the prep work in order for the contracts to have to be as minimal as possible. And it's just laying out the asphalt or. Whatever else comes along with that. So I'm still seeing that. That's what you told us was going to happen. And that's seems to be what is still happening.
I guess what I'm looking for is whatever the total budget for the public works department is. What percentage of that comes from measure V funds is paid for by measure V funds because they're actually doing other things besides measure V work.
Looks like bottles. Looks like. If you look at just this section here, you're looking at two point eight nine. So subtract a little bit of that. Um, interest and principal.
Sorry, I'm just gonna pull up the budget. So on our website. You can go to the finance department and see our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And it gives an overview of. All of the expenses and you can break it down. This is general fund expenses. So as you can see in general fund, uh, we have. About seventy-seven point nine six percent of the general fund goes towards salaries, about sixty-five thousand dollars. And. And we have measure B sales tax. So we have about two point six million. Uh, budgeted in revenues for this fiscal year. And let's see, personnel services thirty-three point sixty-five percent or about nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty. And let's see, personnel services, thirty three point sixty five percent or about nine hundred and eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty thousand. For personnel and the measure V expense.
Pretty close.
So then um we've got one point six million in debt service. The bonds, capital equipment, one hundred and seventy six thousand. Indexed costs. Supplies and materials, thirty five thousand. The project funding.
Sorry, I can't read this.
I'm sorry. Um the measure V loan expense, twelve point six million. And this is all on our website under the finance department. If you go to our budget. So I'll try to slow down for you. Alright, this is gas tax. In uh gas tax, we budgeted revenue of about eight hundred and ninety three thousand. I could see historical, but I can't get it off of this page. And then for gas tax personnel, oops, I got it wrong. For gas tax personnel, it's about four hundred and eleven budgeted. Thousand, four hundred and eleven thousand five. So those are the three. Major personnel. Allocation but uh budget funds.
So you've integrated um. The public works budget has a combination of gas taxes and the measure V funds, so we're.
Well, yeah, it always.
Yeah, well, obviously. Like I said, I don't know how you can argue with not spending. The uh the money on wages because you have to maintain roads, so. From what I saw out there in the Parkwoods area. Terrific improvements. Anybody else have anything on that line of thinking? Otherwise, I'm gonna move on to my next line of thinking. My next question is uh. Going forward, we're gonna have to service this uh this loan. Um that should say fairly stable as far as the amount we're gonna pay, which will be. On that debt service, which would be what, three hundred and. Something thousand a year? Is that correct?
I think that. Matt, do you know the answer to that?
Debt service is about one point five million a year.
No, no, on the loan?
Paying it back?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I I guess I'm a little confused is that uh it's a fifteen million dollar loan? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah, um and the debt service schedule is already prepared going out those. Uh I forget how, if it's fifteen or twenty years. And.
It's an average per year is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, average is about one.
Alright, so good for you. You have to budget and the jobs that you're gonna uh be doing are gonna be smaller scale, of course. Because we'll have less money available, so if you add up the money that's being spent on the crew plus the debt service. Uh subtract that from the two point six million that we're getting through the measure V funding. Um what do you anticipate the yearly spending to be?
Do say. Exactly, thank you.
We're looking at about two point six million a year that you're collecting in uh measure V taxes and if one point six is going into debt payment, that means there's a million dollars left. To uh for salaries and for for those working on the roads. And for uh other projects, which is why when you look at the map for the future projects that are a whole lot smaller in scope. But there's not going to be that much money left over from each year to pay off the debt and uh to continue doing more projects.
And the interest will come down as we pay a million dollar principal, then it's gonna be less interest next year, following years.
Do we get a jungle loan?
I I heard it was, we borrowed it three point two and and I think the. Life account at the time was paying three point nine.
Yeah.
So it was a net gain, which was pretty good, which kind of explains holding on to it for a year before we. Actually allocated the money to these big projects that are going on. At least we made money on that money in the meantime.
And that was the city council, we did step in and help us.
But just to let you know, uh and and gas tax can mean so many different things. Cause there's the Huda, there's SP one, there's an extra bonus that I believe you get five hundred thousand dollars for being a self-help city with the taxes. Uh in twenty twenty one or twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, the total was six fifty eight, seven ninety seven. Uh five twenty three the following year. I'm not even gonna tell you the twenty. Three twenty four, that one's weird, it says seventy four thousand, that's gotta be wrong. But now it's eight ninety three, so I don't know that it's going down. It looks like it might be going up. Uh but what it pays for might be going down.
Hopefully.
No, no, meaning the amount of road that you can pay for might be decreasing. Uh you might have more money on your hands, but less road to make, build.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
So are you done with your presentation? Do you have more? I know you want to talk about like the, there's a map and uh materials and stuff like that, so. I don't want to ask my question too soon, uh but it has to do uh with the future years as well, similar to Ray.
Right, so this is the map. It shows projected going forward, year by year, the different colors represent the year of that project. That may be what some of the people in the.
Do you guys mind if I do banner real quick?
Wanna go out and take a look.
So.
What's the, the the blue is twenty twenty five, I believe?
Yes, I can come over there so I can see it better.
What was that?
Can I come over there and see it better?
Uh you can go to the corner, but not in front of the the board members. Uh so this is twenty twenty five. What color is twenty twenty six? Cause it's hidden.
Uh dark darker blood.
So like this?
Yes, Seroni Ridge.
Robinson.
Yeah, it looks like Robinson right there. So that's all twenty twenty six. Are there any other blue in area? What's what's the following year? Twenty twenty seven.
Is it the bright?
I think.
It's a darker green, it's down.
I think this lady's interested in Ridgeview.
I'm interested in Lakeside Village where I live.
So that's not there, that's twenty thirty. The oh, there it is, the darker green.
Oh, thank, oh, that's Lasky.
So that's twenty twenty seven?
Yeah. Yep.
Which twenty twenty seven's been dark.
I think, I think. She's interested.
Yeah.
Is that Lakeside Village there?
Yeah, that's Lakeside Village.
What year is that?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, it's always twenty twenty nine.
Oh, sorry, twenty twenty nine. I made, yeah, sorry.
Okay, what happens when our roads continue to fall apart between now and twenty twenty nine? Because that's.
You could submit a service request for potholing.
Excuse me?
You could submit a service request online for to go pothole.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
No, I don't want the problem, so that's what you've done.
I know what I'm saying is while we're waiting for this, this is what you can do in the meantime. We can't get everybody all at once.
So what's twenty twenty eight? This or the yellow?
It's a brighter green.
So brighter green, this is twenty twenty eight and that's Yule?
Yeah, forty and Yule and I think Valley also.
Is that West?
Yeah. Forty and Yule is much worse than Yule.
Where's Valley?
It's the street. I don't I don't think it's highlighted, but it's.
Maybe it's right here? Cause I see some green dots right here.
I don't know what the dots are.
Okay, and then this is twenty twenty nine in purple.
Yeah.
So Olympic and the village area is the twenty twenty nine?
Olympic, we're actually doing a grant.
Okay, I would hope so.
Soon.
I would hope so.
Yeah, soon. It's uh being designed.
And then the yellow one was twenty thirty?
Yep.
So that's the um uh Siwa and uh.
Like Arcata, Yucaya.
Yeah.
And then it's uh Copperbank Road being done now.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
It's it's online already for where the meeting is, so if you go to agendas and clearlyCA dot west. Uh then you can find the attachments and it'll have that map there.
Uh we're also doing down road. And so we're gonna pay up to.
Oh, is there one?
For the last.
The city council.
The city council. Okay, so you've you've added. Um the pieces of road that weren't there and was requested by the city council. Um but some of those roads that were added to the current project was a result of us having extra contingency money left over and. Trying to make the most of the project and so. But that decision came from a group of.
I can't find, I can't, where's Mullin? I can't find Mullin.
Some of the city councils.
Look for the main streets, there's Olympic. That's Olympic, there's Austin, there's Austin. These are the tree streets. Oh, here's my street, Liddell. It's not not even on the map. Got you. This is my street, Liddell. There's there's no plan. I think you should, I think you're being left out. I think you should speak up. Just uh.
Such a small amount.
It's Olympic and that's Austin, that's very good.
Cause we're not doing these by ourselves, right? This is, we have to contract this.
I can't tell what that is, but this is a lot of work.
Kind of doing another bundle.
Have you been out to this area?
One year is two streets.
Oh, really?
Two blocks, so.
All all of this area is all paved. And they're and they're and they're catching a bunch of these streets. That this one uh wasn't paved before, it is now.
You're trying to do more than your.
This is. Now, this is the park, is it the park? That's that's our words, huh? And all all these, all these are, well, they're working on these now. If you drive out there.
We're currently on red?
Yeah. If you drive out there, you'll see all of these are paved and they're working on these as we speak. So they're working on some of these streets. Oh, they're just going down.
But when you go to the point where you're only doing two streets and not even a full two streets, you got that dark green, what it's like.
Right, but you're only getting, as we see, we're getting two and a two point six million in and we're spending a million.
I was trying to see, can you see what that says?
Debt service, so you only have a million dollars, so.
I don't know.
How many streets can you do for a million dollars that year?
A million dollars will give you one mile over.
So you can see the breakdown up here, how many miles each of the sub- layers are.
Yeah.
And so.
And and I think it's it's in the messaging that, okay, you could have waited for your road to be fixed over the course of the next. Five to six years or we did what we did as well, the city did what the city did. Uh to go into debt service and do a whole lot of projects in one year, maybe one and a half years. Uh depending on the status of the projects, but I think it's in the messaging of. It could have either taken a whole lot longer and what's on these projected dates, which are not static but projected. Uh that those would be five, six years further on down the road if everything had kept going the same. As it was before, so I think it's important to just remind people that. We've slimmed down the timeline for getting a lot of these roads fixed versus where we were in twenty sixteen, seventeen, when we originally started this process.
We're paving almost twenty miles over about twelve million dollars this year. Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
Addie, I I I was up there with my nose in the map when you talked about. You you actually just change orders and added a bunch of streets. I'm I'm guessing Peony.
We did Benton Boxwood and we're uh the rest is Silver Bank to the county line in Quilay Park.
Yeah, I I I. What was the total cost of those that you awarded on the change order? Just out of curiosity.
Ah.
Is it because you saved the contingency because things are going so well? Congratulations on that and to the contractor out there, but yeah, I was uh, a lot of these roads like Peony and and uh Boxwood and these others. Have never been paved in parts of Sonoma. They've been dirt forever and and they weren't part of this project and you guys were just able to. Take advantage of the unit cost for this paving and add this in. Great job. I mean, I I I drove out there, I was wow.
And we try not to jump from like, say, one end of the city to another. It's just not efficient to do that. So when we add it, we try to make a complete streets area like as the park, as you see out there, it's. We just added a next and that was in working with Nakta Unified, we instead of a safe routes to school grant, we added to that to make it help. Accommodate the school, like say in Pomo, to have an alternate way of going in, we're gonna make it safer. We're looking at. Alternatives to that, such as one way that we added, we are paving the roads to aid the school district in that as well.
Everything it's saying makes perfect sense. It's it's common sense to take advantage of their, on those unit prices. Um they just transferred over or did you renegotiate those or?
Some of them I actually got them to negotiate down on the unit price, but most of it is just the unit price, which on that job was like one point one eighty a ton.
Well, when you're doing that much, the unit price is gonna be lower. And oh uh, nice job. That's all I can say about that. Uh people up there must be thrilled.
Thank you.
Any other additional comments from the room or the room?
I still look at whether we can look at a future bundling because you're looking at such small pieces of project. Or are those all being done in-house? Not in-house, not. So you got a contract somewhere.
How how much of uh uh grant money have you integrated into all this spending? I I saw a number online of sixty eight million dollars. And we know we haven't collected that much in seven years.
I think that's, we have a a bunch of different grants, so I'm not sure of the number that you saw.
In regard, in regard to paving?
Yeah, in regards to paving, I couldn't quantify it at this time, but there's a lot out there, like we get five hundred thousand. From the local partnership program, formulae program. I'm also writing a grant right now for the local partnership competitive. For up to four million dollars. We also have roundabout construction money in the amount of five point five STIP funds. That was allocated to us, which we are in design now. I know that's not really. What we would consider road paving, but is more of a safety factor, but it will include some paving as well in there.
That's self-help.
Active transportation. Funding, there's HSET funding out there, which we have not received yet, but all the other funding in this book we have received in the past three years.
I I think it's important for people to understand. State of California looks kindly upon cities that decide to help themselves because we passed this. Measure V funding and we are a self-help city. Uh they're much more likely to award us these grants. It kind of moves us up the list in in the line and uh you guys are taking good advantage of that. I appreciate that.
The sixty eight million dollars wasn't all for roads.
Yeah, yeah, but but.
It was all the grant funds together, which partially is for our code enforcement program too, so.
Yeah, yeah, any idea how much went to roads? I I think all of the the money to pave the park out out um.
Quilay Park.
Yeah, Quilay Park.
South Park and Tree Streets are all measure V, there's no grant fund.
Okay, but the one, the one that was out, the sulfur fire. Yes, yes, that was rampant. It wasn't PG&E money.
Cause HCG.
And Arrowhead, Burns Valley and.
That's big. I mean, that's huge.
Betterhead, Birds Valley and Olympic will be uh CDBG funding as well.
Alright.
So one thing I I worry about is uh. So obviously you still want to do as many projects as you can because you don't want to just sit still and just pay off the debt service. You have some extra revenues and so you're putting it back in. Uh I'm not seeing or understanding, cause I would feel that your amount of maintenance work. For the streets that have been done, especially those that are now about to be five years old, four years old and so on. Uh the maintenance work is gonna start increasing, so. I'm not sure how I see that being projected in the future. Granted, maybe you've already, that's why those projects are getting slimmer and slimmer. Uh but there's one, one other thing that I feel. Again, without being an engineer, without being a road construction guy, I I just giving you my uh anecdotal experience of seeing things. I'm seeing a lot of big cats crawling on brand new streets to get to where the projects are and I'm like, no. Don't, and and so. Um I don't know what they're called, but it's basically uh like a steamroller, but with the teeth. Uh so that it it stamps.
Sheep's foot?
Sheep's foot.
Or the sheep's?
And when I I'm seeing that rolling on Arrowhead that has just been fixed so it can get out to the park. I'm thinking, what are we doing? This is going to destroy.
Talking about a sheep's foot compactor on a paved road?
Yeah.
Somebody should have got fired, in my opinion.
There's been a lot of heavy equipment going out to Holiday Island, back and forth, back and forth, truckloads of dirt going out there.
This next slide.
Yeah.
Oh, let me see.
Yeah. That's what's been going on, but but they they parked. That's what's been going on. But they parked right there, at the park area where they're parked on 13th and Sulfur Bank. And I followed that guy up and down Arrowhead and I'm just, I worry that we're looking at areas that are good to do, but maybe geographically it doesn't make sense to go through a good road in order to reach where the project is. Maybe we need to slowly move the, kind of slide across the city to get our projects done rather than one here, one there. And all of a sudden, we're having to use heavy equipment on pre, just redone roads, which is only going to deteriorate them that much faster because they are some pretty heavy-duty equipment and they hurt the roads. So I've seen that, I don't know if that was a mistake, but I do see it more often than I'd like to. And the big trucks that are coming in with all the hauling in all the asphalt, hauling in or out the dirt, in the dirt, all of them, they're using the really good roads that we've just created for them, which leads me to believe that those roads will just deteriorate a whole lot faster and we'll have to figure out how to keep the maintenance up and so on and so forth. So it's something that, as I see the 2026, 2027, are we identifying the right one for the next project so we're not utilizing the brand-new roads to reach those next projects? That's all I've mentioned.
I would think if a sheep's foot compactor traveled up the road in one way, you'd know it because the marks would still be there.
I thought he left a mark on the uphill of Arrowhead where that up and down before that five-way stop.
You could put a smooth derramer or on any road, it's not going to hurt.
I was snapping pictures.
That guy should get his paycheck, that shouldn't happen ever. That's a no-no.
Is there a time, is there a, I guess, an end date to this Measure V project? Will it just continue on without--
Without a good sunset, if we're over here--
It's a 20-year tax, so 2030.
2036.
And further discussion, comments? 29?
I'll make one last comment. I think you guys have been doing a fantastic job. I think it's very personal of an issue for people who live in the city. If your road has not been fixed, then it feels wrong the way that it's being done. But the city needs to look at the city as a whole, not just as individuals who want, or being allowed and want something. And the amount of work that's happening, the amount of change that's happening, your pavement index score, all of that is showing that there's good work being done. And I think it's about getting people to recognize that overall the roads are better. It might not be yours personally, and you guys will get there. It's just a matter of time, but you can't do it all at once and you can't borrow all the money and the work you pay, which you can't afford. But I appreciate what you guys are doing and I think it was smart to get the loan. I think you guys did a good job of catching it before it went up to 7% interest rate. So I thought it was really good timing and really good idea.
To address your question a little bit more about when your road's going to be done, the city council actually wanted this group to have some input on that in addition to the engineers and the public works people, but the city council decided to keep that for themselves. So you need to call them up and let them know that you want to get your road done.
I've already talked with Joyce and the reason I'm concerned is because when I bought the house 21 years ago, the streets were still good in the village and I've seen them deteriorate. And I was against Measure V when it first came up. I know it had, it was going on three times. And our street has been, we've had, we got all kind of, what do you call it? There are problems with our street. I live on Lakeside. There are problems and I've seen you all come and patch them and before I know it, they've deteriorated again and again and again. So that makes me angry.
The lion's share--
Other streets that have been done, some streets that have never been paved and I'm happy they're getting paved. But if I wanted to live on a dirt road, I would have stayed on 43rd Avenue.
I agree with you completely.
Instead of where I bought my house.
I agree with you completely, is that we paid for roads and they should be there.
They should be maintained.
Yes, I agree. And the majority of the, when you say Lakeshore Village, most of it was done. All the interior streets--
On the other side.
Right, right. And the harbor. My son lives kind of near where you are and--
But outside wasn't done.
Yeah, it wasn't, I agree. So you need to call your councilman and let him know that--
You want to move from 2029 to something else.
I agree with you. And when we see our roads deteriorating and then paving streets that were not paved, we all bought on a street that was paved for a reason. The quality of our road was part of that reason. And to now just have it torn up and almost-- I drive my car at about five miles an hour at my street that's been paved, that because it is so bad.
And some of the new paved roads, people are complaining people are driving too fast. What do you think, you know? Call law enforcement, have them put one of those--
Good problem.
I lived on Lakeshore Drive and nobody did it and instead of hearing a trailer from two miles away going all the way down the road, it was smooth and quiet. So there were a couple speeders, but otherwise it was amazing.
Now it's just those little spot holes driving nuts.
On Lakeshore?
Yeah, people driving--
Gentlemen, have a question?
Yeah, I came here, we're just going to work at, but talking to the personnel here earlier, I kind of got eased down because some of the issues, I've been fighting issues for five, six years. And they're addressing me and I appreciate that. But I'll say this, that the road that you guys did, we talked about maybe it's from Moss up to--
Davis?
Yeah, it's cracking right now, it's just all the way down. It's probably a separate--
If you don't mind my making a statement, we just signed a new contract, I think, between the county and the city because the county's supposed to pay 70% and the city 30%. Sorry. I get strung out when the county has-- But the county pays the largest percentage because it's a county facility at the end of the road. And so it's a partnership between the city and the county to redo Davis and Moss every so often because of the usage for the--
I'll add into that, one thing you should consider if you're going to do that road again, is you should consider Phillips back again because there's only two major ways out of that yard. And a lot of guys coming from the yard, from the yard, taking Phillips, going to get something drained or get a heat or whatever. And they wear the heck out of Phillips, Phillips is going to go this year, I tell you right now. That six blocks is going to go. And then they turn down and go down 40. So I'm saying if you're going to redo that, you need to look at that also because those heavy, that heavy equipment is overusing of that avenue street.
Did you have any questions?
I do have, I'm glad that you've mentioned that. Where is the agenda? But I don't see on the map a redo, what is going on on my computer? A redo of 40th Avenue, am I correct? Yeah, I don't see 40th highlighted as a future project.
We're applying for a grant right now--
Okay, okay. Because that road scares me for multiple reasons and I hope that the grant gives you the ability to put sidewalks. If you ever want to walk that, I dare you. Because it is probably the most dangerous road for pedestrians, I think, in the entire city. And it gets really dark at night. And people who are living in the avenues want to go to Cash and Cool-- or Cashin', no, I think it's Cash and Cool-- to go get drinks, food, whatever, because it's the convenience store in the area. But that is probably one of my scariest roads to drive on, especially at night. And so I'm glad to hear that you're trying to get grant funding. And is Caltrans planning to put in on that for that intersection right there? Because it's pretty choppy right now.
No, so it'd be 40th from Moss-ish to Boils and then Boils from 40th to 18th is what we're going for.
What kind of grant is that?
A local partnership program, competitive grant.
It's the advantages of the self-help, yeah.
All right, is there any more discussion or would a board member like to offer the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Okay, second? Sure. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Offered resolution number OC2024-01, resolution of Measure V, Oversight Committee of the City of Clearlake Declaring Compliance Protection 3 through 7.14, ordinance number 189-2016. Do you want me to make this?
We can go on and we can just do a full--
Okay.
No, you don't have to wait.
Okay, so we'll just do it in title only. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passed.
Colonel, do you mind if I have a follow-up question? So I know that there's state auditing that happens specifically to Measure V because you have to get it set up at the state controller's office or the, I'm thinking of the right department, the tax--
Franchise tax.
Franchise tax board. Do you have audit, it'd be nice to see the audits here, to kind of see the previous audits, kind of what your scores were, any concerns, just because it would help educate us in what maybe we missed or what we should be looking at. But I know that there's a specific part for special taxes to make sure you follow what the voters approve.
And I would defer to Director Cressy, but I believe that we were just getting up to speed on last year's audit. I think that they're finishing it up. So is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, I just came on a month ago and we finished the financial audit and the single audit, which includes all the grants, federally funded grant funding. And that was for the 23-year, we're not skipping a beat, we're starting the 24-year audit and that is on track. There was just one finding, a material weakness in the city's financial processes really related to, all stem from staff turnover. We've had, I think, two directors in the last couple of years and and so we're hoping to, so I'm coming in as a consultant to provide a stable resource to the department and work with staff to bolster it. So I think we're on good footing now to-- We also have other consultants that are helping with the grant management. There's a whole firm that the city council approved a contract with a while back and they're now, you know, all the funding for Sulfur Road and that is now coming to completion, all the CDBG funding, they're helping manage that with the help of Bambi there. And then also there's a accounting firm that also is helping with a lot of the legwork. And my job now is coming in is to help oversee it and make sure everybody's utilized to their full potential as far as the consultants. And see things, help shepherd things through. So as far as bringing a financial audit to the Measure V committee, we can do that at whatever time that makes sense. I think with the annual report, typically the audit's not done till closer to November, December each year. And so it would probably need to be a separate meeting versus this meeting, which I think historically has been in October. But yeah, so I think things are looking good in that regard and I'll defer to staff or Alan, the city manager, on what he would prefer on bringing the audit report forward. We are bringing it to council, the 23 audit on November 7th. Thanks.
And I appreciate that Measure V in your audit, because you're doing a comprehensive city audit, which probably includes PEG TV and LAFCO as well as all city functions. But is Measure V is kind of like an enterprise fund. What comes into Measure V can only be spent on Measure V, it doesn't go anywhere else. So is it already kind of its own separate report within the single audit that you're doing?
It's broken out in the financial statements as its own fund and it's kept separate as a kind of a special revenue with restrictions and the related capital projects that it does. There's no separate financial statements, that is only Measure V. That would be a report we can compile and provide to the Measure V committee. As far as the audits, there is a state gas tax audit that's done each year and we're about to start that for this prior year. And that, there's reporting forms online that we need to submit all of the street-related costs and those are audited, pretty scrutinized, pretty, in pretty much a lot of detail. The financial audit that is done and it, like you said, is comprehensive, includes all funds and they have their procedures. And, but I can say it's not as detailed, but I think this committee, you know, provides oversight and and, you know, a level of assurance that the funds are being spent for what the voters approved and what's needed. And, you know, it's only going towards streets and I think that's what it was set up for and it works well. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it does, but I think it's up to this committee whether we want to request, because I wouldn't mind seeing the 22, 23 audit. I don't need to see this year's. Next year, when we meet again, I can see the 23, 24, but I just think it's added material to help ensure that there's a second layer and we can see the report that says it is being used correctly. We concur with what the committee has said. And so I don't know how the rest feel about that, but that's just me.
Yeah, I like that. And I also, you know, as we look at some of this, some of these are such small projects, you know, can we bundle them? Is there an opportunity for additional grants that we could go for such that you're, instead of doing one or two little roads, you're, you know, increasing the capacity in terms of what we can put together and have a bigger project.
And then also don't forget that all these projects take separate engineering, geology and so forth. So that's why this big project, we didn't do anything for a year because we had to get it all set up and ready to go. And it's the same thing with these smaller projects. They may have restrictions based on the ability to get the funds and the work done.
And the staff.
Oh, not the staff.
And what's 20 grants to manage, let's just throw a few more.
Says the grant person.
Trust me, we'd love to get 10 more.
I respectfully disagree with that. I think that it sounds great and it is great, but it asks a whole lot from the council to look at, again, further debt services, which that's not what we're a part of. So I think it's a comment that can be made publicly when they're looking at their street programs and what they're choosing to do. But I don't know that we should be telling them to continue going into debt in order to do more projects that are projected to be done. That's just my thing.
Got a question that, I just noticed my notes here. When, we've got a lot of paving to do here on the tree streets and then in Bell Laguna. When do you project that they're going to shut the paving down as far as the availability of those? At what point? Are we going to get those done before the end of the year?
Yes.
You think so? Even considering the temperatures dropping?
We paved in December.
I have personally paved here in December. Yeah, the plan is to do FDR and paving in November for Thanksgiving on the tree streets and on Ball Park. Green Lake Park is probably 75%.
Yeah, I drove out there, you guys go into town. But on that same line, has there been any holdup with the new water main installations?
The water main installation on the Bell and then are complete and they're back out there doing the gutter and prepping for FDR in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so has there been any change orders, any costs incurred by the city? Waiting, the contractor having to switch gears and-- Waiting, the contractor having to switch gears and get the water mains in? I heard they weren't gonna do them and then all of a sudden they decided. Amazing, they changed their mind. Was there any cost incurred by the city in the changeovers?
No, we're never gonna not do them.
Pardon me?
Sarah from Highlands Water. We were never gonna not do them. I don't know.
Well, I think we were trying to find an alternative solution. Yeah, we realized that that first solution was not going to work. And so we had to replace the water mains and Highlands contracted directly with Argonaut, who's contracted on that job, so.
So they weren't as likely to backcharge you, yeah?
It was pretty seamless. It was really nice.
That was, that was good thinking. If they had been, had to go home and somebody else was gonna put those mains in, they would have backcharged. Awesome.
Yep. And then on Clear Lake Park, Golden State has probably a couple thousand feet of water. It's a bit shallow, so that's gonna push a little bit of paving into next year.
Okay, so you're talking about the Tree Streets again, yeah?
Clear Lake Park.
Oh, Clear Lake Park, okay. How about the Tree Streets? Are they replacing all those mains on all those streets?
The project the Consensus Bean was working on was completed last week with their main replacement. So they're out of our way.
Awesome.
And that was a Golden State project.
And no backcharges there either?
No backcharges there. I don't think there's gonna be any backcharges on the Clear Lake Park job. I think Golden State would incur any additional mobilization because of water being shut.
Good job again. Thank you.
Sounds like people know what they're doing.
The cooperation goes along, right?
In fixing the things that we didn't know what we were doing. Or different COVID at the time.
So going back to Bruno's idea, do we want to include that in our future items where in our G or agenda to be lagging your behind with the audit relating to Measure V?
I don't know. You think it's that important, Bruno?
I just think it's added documentation support that we're doing it correctly.
This itemized list doesn't, doesn't.
Audits go much deeper than that.
I'll go along with you if you think it's that important. I mean, I don't know why anybody would print nonsense on this, but, okay. You wanna hold their feet to the fire, I'm with you, buddy.
I don't think it's nonsense. And it's the year before that we'd be looking at. But I think it gives extra support for our decision that.
Make the motion. I'll second.
Two years later.
Make the motion. I think consensus is good for the future agenda.
So we're consensus and we're gonna act, we're gonna provide that. Any other city reports?
I think we have.
Thank you, Matt.
And that's our future.
Thanks, Matt.
Motion opposed, me. Second?
Why, really, it's all these seconds.
Aye.
Please, Jerry?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.